To our person in the name of October, it's autumn. I'm very excited. It doesn't feel like it, but it is. All righty, Kathy Rodeklauff, please.
Albert Cooper Ferguson. Laden Hawley Genelli Matrina Petrofessa Tabusak. Trenzola.
Every time. Now, Dr. Blanca, you're here. There he is. Hi. All right, admissions. To start, we'll start with recognition. And, um, Dr. Blanca. You can sit down so you don't have to stand in the middle of the room.
At this, you know, we hired and really thanks to the boards foresight in permitting us to do it. We started early up over Rogers Park, beginning to put together our curriculum and faculty. And from then, we was going to be starting very good. You made great connections with the kids and the faculty. And visitors come and call me all the time when you there. Appreciative of the time, the culture, the spirit. Not only does it matter to school, but your visibility. You teach a class, and you have extracurricular activities that you participate in. You're a 360 principal for those youngsters. And we have to give them, but also social motion. You didn't fill out a disrecognition as well, so for first year principal. And I'm sure there will be other awards as we, as you stay with us for a while. Any comments on the front?
It's great to be part of Danbury community, Danbury family. And growing some really fantastic schools here in Danbury. And really pleased and honored to be a part of.
This wonderful couple, I said, you know, I think this is a great school. And then they were a great choice of a principal. And we started talking to, here's my son.
That's good. Okay. That's good. Thank you very much, Frank. Thanks for all you do.
We hope there's a spot for you in the agenda for later, okay?
I'm going to give it up. I hear you have to leave. All righty, um, panel participation. The board welcomes panel participation in the next speaker's closing meeting. The comments to three minutes. Please, speakers may offer objective comments on school operations and programs. The board will not permit any expressions of personal complaints or diplomaticary comments about board of education personnel and students or against any person connected with the Danbury public school system. So what we'd like to do is start with Rachel. There she is. And Cholaski, please.
And Professor of the AIS PTO. I have written the board worries regarding the change to student life back in June, that this change would impact young children and place a strain on their families. The school will see a decline in terms of alimony and support and a greater rate of students in college. And the second student does not get into AIS, parents will most likely fall over the street. My second letter to the board, I requested in a field, the decision to eliminate student preference for Danbury, as this change will not directly affect parent's families negatively affect the status of our school community. The school was awarded in 2014-15, Danbury Act, Elementary School Year, on the basis of its wonderful school climate, sincere sense of family, in collaboration of staff, parents, and community. Moreover, the procedures are not the same for the rest of the school in Stroud County, nor its own Danbury element, basis for schools, known as the district office. Why aren't Danbury AIS applicants made yet? I have spoken to many parents and community members about this, who all seem to say the same thing. It's bizarre and just doesn't make any sense. From what I understand, made on the basis of being more fair. Well, what is fair? Fair has never been defined or. We're at two, new campus of the school. Step forward. Many schools in Bridgeport just reinstated their student preference policies after a term of outlet. The trial was settled, and now those schools once again have student preference, effective next 2015-16, four years. Most other magnet chartering nearly schools in the state have student policies that leaves families alone. We urge the board to reconsider their decision. The petition, I have only just started. I have collected names in our communities. Those include Danbury, Beppo, Brookfield, Newtown, Milford, and Reading, as well as families with children at all of Danbury schools, who all reject the decision to eliminate student preference for Danbury residents. Thank you.
I'm doing it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next, person.
Again, I'm up here just to reiterate my concern about the middle school lottery process. And I did look at the agenda for tonight, and I saw that there was an item to set up. That I didn't believe in the lottery process. So my, um, what I really hope is deeper discussion regarding the fact that there are still four separate lotteries, completely scattering, and from the board, I'd feel, please. Um, we, as Rachel just talked about, the decision for AIS was all about fairness, yet the middle school lottery is still, you know, it's not fair. You're not giving all students the same chance of getting in to be under this wonderful principal's leadership. By having a broad view lottery and Rogers Park lottery, you're basically saying, there's not one lottery. So I don't understand how that can be a true lottery, that students from one population could have a better chance of getting in. So, I mean, really, is the overreaching goal of this school to have population control or to offer choice? So I'm not sure you can do both with this. And why is there nothing in writing on the application process that says there's two lotteries for each school? Because people are not aware of this until their child's on waitlist, and then someone from the broad view list gets in, even though their number is higher than someone else. So I look forward to hearing about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. All right, um, next we have Franklin. I can't read your last name. I'm terribly sorry. I'm sorry?
Oleskas.
Okay.
My name is Franklin Oleskas. I'm here on behalf of all departments of Burge Street, Noventure, Park Avenue, Noventures. And we would request a bus stop. Currently, the bus is stopped at the intersection of Westwood Avenue and Burke Street. And for, um, a lot of our concern is that our children faces danger because it's a busy street. And there's always cars going at a good speed. And we are concerned that our children would get hurt. And we would like to request a new bus stop change at 12 Burke Street. Currently, in the past, Morris, Morris's school bus, their stop was at 12 Burke Street. And we would like to request the same stop for Park Avenue, uh, Park Avenue Middle School, the bus number 47. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next I have Isit Donna.
Yeah.
Hi.
Hi, Margaret. Good evening, everybody. Um, so as I said, my name is Donna Coleman, and I'm here to, I'm, I'm in behalf of the town, talk. I'm speaking in behalf of my two. I'm here representing, um, Burke Street. We are. Bus stop is in English. And it was very. When the kids used to go to, um. To Morris Street, as the previous speaker had spoken, it was in the 12 Burke Street. So what we're required. It was less of the parents having to drive up all the way up to here. Is that when kids get out of the bus, they all come running outside. And you know, it's, it's not a good stop for them. So what I'm just trying to say again is if there's a possibility that we can please change it, you know, that'd be great. That's all. Thank you.
That's fine. Thank you very much. That's good. Okay, does everybody that's on the list, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak that has not spoken? Yes, sir. Come on up. Please introduce yourself.
You've probably heard. Four Street School, I want to thank the board for their continued support. Um, we got off to a great start. The adjusted to school, it's been, what, seven weeks of. Right here. Wanted to inform you, if you get a chance. The school, stop at our playground, teach. Over the summer, it's painted, fall prints for the Morris Street Lions. It's brightly colored. Kids have a really great sense of pride in the school right now. Um, I had a former student come to visit me, someone I had two years ago. He looked out at the playground, he wishes he was going back to the school because it looked so great. So wanted to know, come to Morris Street School. And we had a wonderful, what did we call that? Welcome back picnic? Welcome back picnic, very good attendance. So school spirit is up. Thank you.
Those of you from Morris, could you stand up?
Thank you, Long. And I drive by Morris Street School all the time, so I'm in on this bill. All righty, the consent. Sal's driving me generally, I'm stoned. Um, consent now, go ahead.
Approves the AIS on the consent calendar, it's 15-156.
$8,000 for literacy training and coaching. Teachers and $19,800. Means on the Ellsworth. Thank you. Um, going through our student. Okay, so I don't remember the name.
Jazza. Jazza.
Um, isn't that offering an after-school club for students during our launching week? Students participated in the high key cheer leadership, yoga, class, K R. Case will never be. Oh, is that?
No. Did you hear what you said?
Offering an after-school club for students. Students participated. Eric Spivoy's get these. And further information about robotics and C D O action. 15-18.
Your presentation. Christina. Sal's driving. Just ready for. Okay, we're moving to Super Junior Board, item A.
Thank you. And then go to the presentation. Um, I attach toward your recommendation, uh, for the lottery. Personally, to set the stage, um, the background for the STEM Academy at Rogers Park was simple. We ran the red district, the middle school. We thought it might be advisable to set up a magnet because we were looking. And give parents a choice to go to Rogers Park. That was our purpose. And we did not achieve that, that. Right. And we would wait right to the end to ask you, in fact, new students that they read to Rogers, we recommend they go over there to keep the class clusters reasonable. We would ask what, so that is exactly what we did. When you moved over to the new school, we just turned over the lottery. The only thing the board dealt with differently, they're not policies, remember, they're not done in policies, simply a regulation of how the lottery is set up for protocol. The board, based on feedback, apparently it was given to you, we decided that the sibling preference would not be something that would be a, um, a lens for selection of students as they entered Westside. So that was not part of that. And that was his purpose. We didn't have a discussion AIS at that time. So, but the intent of having a balance was important. So we went about the. It is true, we did, we have not put in there, as we look at it, that we're too. Rogers Park and two for Rogers, in essence. And. We do accept students from Rogers Park with a. Ease to open up a better choice for. Parents quicker, uh, so they know that their student has gotten into the middle school. You want to go over there.
Own, that choice is very much available. So with that being said, a student could enter both lotteries and receive a seat in both lotteries. In which case, it really causes a backlog in the process because then that student has to make. Academy they wish to attend. Then the backfilling process starts taking place. Fortunately, this takes an exorbitant amount of time. Even though we're doing the lottery in, in January, we're still filling seats in July, in some cases, when students move, so on. And the process is very slow, and I think it actually winds up having the counter effect of limiting opportunities because families can't make decisions in reasonable amount of time because the process gets delayed by all of the communication. So students number all. Patient in offices and family and felt timely. Select a seat or not. Lottery number that. Standing would take precedent over. They have.
I'm just curious, I know the first year, this would be the integrators. And they were incoming six. Now, this year, this current.
So many more applications to the lottery. We, we made a very concerted. School, which we are named to electric student, had a school. And, uh, and we brought students and families from languages to help, and we actually helped families apply right at the school, at our houses to the lottery. Patients there were, the lottery, I think, represented almost 70.
The next year, just it didn't seem to happen as many. Um, so that was just my, my information. My question, I guess, is. About whether.
And always vote. clusters, and it really creates a real, a real student 15, I think.
Current eighth grade students were part of that original population. So there's an imbalance in that group currently. So when the next group rolls in and we pull another 100 students in on top of that, we'll probably get more, based on the way the process is, we know, you'll get closer to activity everything.
Well, you have 100 in sixth grade in both the STEM cabinets, right?
Right, but the seventh and eighth grade is, the seventh grade currently is fairly balanced. The sixth grade is very closely balanced. So once those kids move up and the eighth graders move out, the new 200 that come in.
Well, 100. If you keep with this policy, 100. Well, 100, if you keep with this policy, 100 will, or keep with this system, 100 from Rogers Park, 100 from Broadview.
Yeah, to say, if it... ... most involvement, we were in like 170. If this thing keeps happening, you're going to have to ask...
Did we consider that split for the magnet? Okay, perhaps we should.
Well, for me, I... I don't... Is that devastating? And we start creating problems, then it becomes a problem that is resolved.
But I mean, if we were to, if we were to offer, if we were to offer a 55-45 between Broadview and Rogers Park, so if 10 more students from Broadview get into STEM versus Rogers Park, that, that 100 now becomes 90. And perhaps next year it becomes 80. And again, in an effort to balance it and to, to, you know, public participations point, fair that honestly, a student at Rogers Park has a better chance of getting in because there's less students there participating. So, you know, again, it should be a consideration based on percentage of population. If 55% of the students are within Broadview, of the, within middle school, and 45% are within Rogers Park, then perhaps that percentage should, should balance out with the lottery.
Yeah, I don't like, I don't like the calculus. I think, I understand the motivation there, but I really think that it's imperative that we try to provide as much opportunity at each of the buildings that we can for those youngsters. Because what's happening is if in fact, we were able to change it to create... So at some point, some point, and I'm not, and if it decreases at Rogers Park and the rate changes moves really to redistrict, it'll play a number of things, although I understand the motivation. My heart of hearts, I just would like, like to assure at least 100 seats to the Rogers Park community in Danbury, access to that academy. Less of there.
Well, I mean, let's, let's, let's look around, let's look... Offering 100 students at Broadview. So your chance of winning the lottery is one in 10. Whereas if there's 900 kids in Rogers Park, your chances are one in 11. Better odds. So to balance those odds, you make it 55-45.
Yeah, but, but the end result, a perfect calculus there, I'll wind up with less Rogers Park head in there over into the academy.
And, and you should, you should if there, if there's less student enrollment at Rogers Park.
And I, and I understand, and what I'm saying is the board needs to hassle within your own mind, would that be equitable enough view than the academy for the 10 kids from here? That's what you have to answer.
David, first to know.
Pardon me while I try that. Yeah, I'm looking at the data, I see a, basically it's 1,000 kids in each middle school. And at our current growth rate, we're going to be faced with having to address it significantly or more drastically than just by 50. Regarding a lot of, you know, we sat here for months and weeks discussing choice and we've got to balance this, we've got to balance that, so let's change the ratios to one school or another because we'll... I think to a certain point, for choice, it's one drawing, things out, whether it's all 100 from Broadview, you know, balance things out by 55 here, 40 there. Schools policies along those lines. You want to get balancing it out, it's just, it's mathematical risk. Playing games on Roll Take, 55% from here, 45% got shortchanged, I can complain too.
Fairness, I've worked at Broadview for years and for years we were 100 to 200 kids over and you say 100 isn't that much. Well, let me, if you have... It wasn't fair. We had, we had clusters at 125 and they had clusters at 106, sometimes under 100. So fair is like, I agree, I actually, I can't believe this, but I actually agree with Dr. Sal. I think it should be 50-50. And we are, I also agree with David. We are going to have to deal with, we are going to have to deal with the large number of school. But at least now, if we go with one lottery, we could have 1,100 kids at Broadview. How fair is that? So I say, keep it 50-50, number 100, 100, however you want to do that. And, and start thinking about what we're going to do in the future. I, I need to tell you that I've been talking about a third middle school for 25 years.
Isn't everything that you dreamed it was? You dreamed it was going to be?
No.
300, sure.
It is, it's 300, sure.
Is it, Michael?
My question is, in terms of the new modification for suggestion, is that going to go to Policy Committee?
Open lottery, yeah. Remember I said to you last year, sometimes do this, every kid in fifth grade in the town of Danbury is in lottery. And then they get an invitation letter. Hey, you're in, you're in, it may not be implied, we don't do that, but that would be your decision. Or you could decide to... The only thing you need to be cognizant of is the OCR.
Not even like the policy, the whole thing?
No, no, it wasn't a policy. It went to...
I think the... You change something, there's a band-aid effect as the reality of the situation would be in a few years, what are we going to do with the population? And then I think at that point, we start running on, face the issue. I think whatever we do now, we'll flip-flop and band-aid it for this year if something drastically changes a year that we're, we're hoping. I think to tinkle with it differently than what's being done may be a mistake. I would say to, to agree with the superintendent, if he's temporary, is to stay stack's quote until we get a little bit more feedback under our belt, see where we're going and see what the next couple of years brings us.
Very quickly, I've heard Mr. Hall's comments, I've heard Mr. Trina's comments, I've heard what the superintendent said, and I, I really thank Mrs. Janela because I wanted to sort of thank everybody for that comment. I'm not ready to sit here as a board member and say tonight that I would go with either one of the plans. And I think we need to have some type of discussion. And I think it's just a band-aid to put back, because we put things in place now, two years from there, it could get a whole big explosion. And I think I'm not comfortable sitting here tonight saying I'd go with this plan or that one.
Is there any... I completely forgot. So, I don't know, I appreciate what you're saying, I just don't know what that means because the school has to run next year and we have to have a lottery, like at some point. So I think decisions do have to be made because January is when parents are going to be putting their name in a hat for, so although I, you know, I do think we need to maybe spend more time, we really don't have a lot of time because parents are making decisions as to whether or not to put their job in the lottery in January. So regardless of how you go and continue with a fair 50-50 split, I think the other question was, there's four different lotteries and I, Dr. Laban, believe, what was more, what was more challenging, the fact that there was like a STEM lottery, a global studies, and then people who made it into both?
I, not from my perspective, because we don't deal with the lottery at the school level, but we deal with when the kids get to us. So we still, we have a couple of empty seats right now that we're filling. And we go through this process, who's next on the lottery, they get a call, they have to make a decision. But, you know, typically people don't answer the phone, they get a phone call, so then it's this back call, and they call back at night and then, you know, so, you know what happens at that point. So I think the choice option is really important to keep in mind. And that's what... STEM and/or global studies. I think what has, what we need at our end is options ahead of time to make... It's fine. But how does that data get processed on the back end? It is, like you said, currently four different pools that they're getting pulled from. I think you're, you're going to have to keep a STEM and a global studies lottery because that's an interest factor. And you don't say, I'm going to go Westside and then if I get global studies, I get global studies, or if I get STEM, I get STEM. I don't think, some people are specifically choosing, and I've spoken to families who said, well, we're, we're not interested in going to global sites. And vice versa, my child's got a community, hard to say because I...
Is there anyone else that has any immediate questions for right now because I'm going to do...
I just a comment, you know, we've done this from the beginning and I think balancing the population was, was the major goal. And I'm just looking at the comparison that happened tonight, that stay with what we're doing, that's going in the right direction. But as some people mentioned, for sure, we maybe should have some future meetings and so forth for the long range. Because remember, one of the problems, we did not want to have a large redistricting as an end result because it causes more problems than it solves, okay? The way we're doing, the right direction, we're ready to be balancing the populations because it's a space factor and as mentioned, it's how many students each class. But... People, you know, we're pushing, as I say, we're pushing the... But I, I don't see anything else right now.
So I think we're at like 60. So that's, so if it's like 15... Looked at the redistricting too, the consultant did review, we were about 75 going on a couple more years. I mean, in reality, don't forget, it's really half that in redistricting because you're going to have those kids over, so it's 100, it's really 50 off by a cent because if you redistrict, they can truly rebalance, you're talking on maybe a few streets in the city and a lot of stuff for the sake of...
Rogers Park. What I say to the board, which, which blind to you, you don't see this, is that if you you are going to cut programs to run, not just add, unless... For another building, anybody want to respond for me?
I do, sorry. Need to make some... And it's thanks to... Just we have a workshop on this, we can sit and talk just about this for an hour and an hour and a half without taking up everyone who was meeting tonight. All right, what? I'm sorry? Did, are we just...
I have a question. On regulation. Confused on that. Oh, there you go. So, policy, we, we vote on policy, correct?
Yes.
We don't on regulation?
No.
But we don't about this one.
Because this is, this is, the same reason why we talked about it, not to have the sibling preference, went preference when we opened the new middle school, it's not a policy. A policy is, there's a state law that, that is passed and it says, board, as I'm going to go through some now, you got to have policy to comply with the law. And then there are discretionary policies that you want to make up. You don't want to have bus stops where there's an intersection, you can create policies around that. And they're discretionary policies, right? And then there are simply rules and procedures. And these are simply rules and procedures that we have been following to create, that we, in our lottery, there's no policy. If you want to make it a policy, then someone would say, well, you know, that'd be a good idea for us to create a policy. And then you'd have to create a policy. The general rule is, you know, you make the policies that you need and otherwise you overburden the policies. There's not that there's a right route. It's the board's right to say, let's open it up without going through the whole policy process.
Oh, he isn't mentioning, said this is regulation, not a policy.
Yeah, it's a right in your, in your plan that we submitted for AAS to the state, this district, that's where it's written. And then we just follow, that's all it means. But it's not in your policymaking.
So when they, when something changes, it's a new policy that's initiated and we read the regulations, that's how they're putting that policy, how they're making that work. That's what they're saying now. Normally, we have nothing to say about that because we're not involved in the day in, day out, for instance, how, how things are done in schools.
Right, I just want to clarify, we're throwing words around and...
Right, it's because we're the word policy, the sibling policy, it's not...
You know, sometimes I see one event, go, you know, some regulation, you try to hit and, you know what I mean?
And this came to be based on questions that came, that we put to them, how is this working, how many people from each school, is it as even as we thought it was going to be, so on and so forth. And that's how this discussion started. And, and that's how it ended, literally just a discussion, all right? But there's tremendous amount of questions for, for anything that I've seen. That's why I'm saying if you want to take it to the next level and consider about it, we're not, have to change it, but maybe then you'll all know, be on the same page as to what's actually going on.
So when somebody questions some of the interrules and regulations, what is the procedure? If somebody questions whether or not to still continue to have that rule in your regulations, what is the procedure?
Well, it's administrative, it's administrative. We have an administrative decision that you all think isn't correct and needs to be adjusted. You have the right to say, look, that needs to be revisited. That's your role. And then we, and if I don't agree with you, I would tell you, ultimately, you need to make a decision because that's your role. But this is the administrative realm, all right? That's all this means. But it's not embedded in state law except for OCR. Remember, we keep talking about, OCR regulates this for us in terms of what we're handling. But that's the only thing that...
And Dr. Sal, the people who are sitting in the audience, could you explain?
If it's gonna create that kind of big initiative here, keep it as is? Again, it doesn't, I mean, I don't do the process. You were doing it for parent convenience and choice, right? Just so the board, that's why, that was the motivation. I just wanted to...
Like, if it's not gonna be for 16, we'd say we should wait on a workshop until the start of the new year because there's gonna be no board. But I would say...
Okay.
This, this, if you made the adjustment, it would be for the incoming kids for next September.
So then we should...
If you were accepted as...
Okay. Obviously, it was a ball for you, not a...
I was bound for that night.
But no, no, okay, I said, okay. All right, that's it. And that's all we have to go.
I have a conference.
Sorry. No, it's fine. It's fine. So it's seven yeses.
Three yeses.
And four, including me. Okay. But I have to go, so...
So I just have to ask you any question here. So from the conversation, I'm trying to keep the status quo with the lottery and everything until we have more data to make a judgment. Isn't that sort of what am I picking up?
Yes.
Am I picking that up?
Yes, you are.
I'm hearing is...
We need to...
In order to, in order to look, we're saying no to the meeting, but I hear someone saying, let's take a look at this. Look at it.
Thank you. All right. So... Award to you.
Later report. Other things that they're doing, just so you know, that there's no change in the graduation requirements. They are going to move up. They are going to move up to the 25. It's just a matter of how they put them together. There's, it will cost us FTEs. Their ranges, it's gonna range, it could range between...
Yeah.
No, they aren't going, they froze it. They kept, they froze it.
In 2017?
And now they've opened, so the current seventh grade students will be under new graduation requirements of 25. Right? That'll get finalized as to what those 25 mean. They are looking at different options on how they can achieve 25. There's a senior project or what is the name? Is it called senior project?
Capstone.
Capstone project, which, believe me when I tell you, is gonna be costly for us to implement. Someone has to manage it for us, a small high school, it would not. But not high school when you're running 800 students graduating, you have to keep track of hours and directions. So that's been along with the additional four credits. You remember, I told you, as we graduated, we had somewhere in the vicinity of 200, I don't wanna say 50, 260 students with less than 25, which... But both of our students are over 25. Right? But somehow the legislators want everybody in Carnegie units. Like, that means a lot. That's what they dream. So it's gonna cost you... So think about that in terms of cost. And unit internship providers, which is a good thing for us, which helps us with the DECO program that came about. There's a lot to do. And Debbie's here requiring...
One in every employee in every district has to be trained in physical management training. I'm not sure how that will...
Right now, when students are, and I will say to you guys, there are students who, for various reasons, at early, early ages, acted appropriately and they need some time out. And they have places for time out. However, any areas for seclusion must also have a window so they can break or other fixtures allowing students to clear line of sight beyond the area of, for the seclusion. So we have areas where we can't use anyone because they've decided that it's a bad thing to happen. So that's something to worry about. Out of school suspension. I went up and deskified, but didn't do any good. Public Act 1596 puts a moratorium on out of school suspensions and expulsion for students in preschool through grade two with only limited exceptions. All right? A student in preschool through grade two may only receive an in-school suspension unless after an informal hearing, the administration determines an out of school suspension. The administration determines that an out of school suspension is appropriate for the student based on evidence that the student's conduct on the school ground is of endangerment.
So every single red dot, there is a stop on that bus where the stop arm's actually extended. So we can actually see all that data live, real time. So. And we can also see, well, better estimated in times. This is also upgrading our current maps. We currently have a very outdated map in the current system. This is now ties in directly to Google Maps. And it's much more up to date. So when the city adds a new road or makes four, we have to almost like kind of digitally draw in the road, which was kind of complicated and cumbersome. Yeah, pretty much. The other piece of this, there's a parent component. So with, with a versitran, there's an app that you can install on your phone and you can find out when the charles bus is gonna get here. On the phone will give you an ETA, either estimated pickup or drop off time. So the parent could log in, set up their account, configure it, and then they can always get real time information on when their bus, the bus will arrive at their stop. We constantly, that cuts down a lot of phone calls to the schools and to the central office. We always... Study that versitran gave us issues at times with drivers. This actually, like a sharp turn, corners, G forces, so it gives us a lot of insight. And I think it was laptop or cell phones that it got. There is some fuel savings because we do get issues at idling time for excessive idling of their buses. You're only supposed to idle bus on my... To ensure that all the routes are being run correctly. And as it said out, it eliminates as low as 300 feet per vehicle per day, adds to large savings. Really neat thing, we've got, or the brunt of it, because obviously, it's almost like a cellphone subscription monthly for each bus. So you have 125 buses on... Offers about 35... Funds and the ongoing cost of 45. Great tool for us to go in forward, particularly to as we talk about redistricting and all different kinds, not redistricting, looking at where students are enrollment is gonna be really interesting. They don't use the redistricting word. And that's...
Joe, we got substitutes a lot. So would the route be organized for the sub to the following, that chart? Is that part of his deal?
No, I mean, there's no iPads on the bus.
Just the right...
Yeah, Mark Walsh and Transportation Associates, they're gonna review all... System for busing. So there's conversation on bell scheduling and times. I mean, that hasn't really come out yet. He's looking like the early and late elementaries. You know, at times with first ability to save busing, but we have to see the impact to the schools and the community. So that's, that's where transportation.
Well, they're very subjective on some of the pieces.
So we already had a process in place already, but some were really, I mean, dicey. I've had some now that have been, I know a friend who has in Cheshire, and they had a four lane road and the bus had the arm out and it automatically issued the ticket depending who set the program up. And I mean, it wasn't, it was questionable for the violations.
But it's not that there's a rash or turnover flowing down.
No, no, it was, it was sense for additional revenue. But I mean, the company gets a piece of it. So there really was a lot, I think, and actually made it back this. I know the police chief, we looked at it extensively and they didn't see, didn't go forward with it.
It doesn't matter. All the buses. So if you travel, it's 49 and now 49 breaks down and 54 is driving them.
Oh, yeah, it, yeah, they'll always be on, yeah.
Is that the right question?
Yeah, they get, the bus, it'll follow the routes in a sense.
Right. For my account, I love it, by the way, but when I set up my account, bus 45 breaks down and 62 is driving it, is my account gonna follow bus 62? You know, you know what I'm saying?
Good question.
Like, if it's a totally different bus.
Yeah.
Not that that happens often, but just, you know what I mean? Like, when I log on, I'll be like, where's the bus?
Or you'll see the bus on my YouTube server. I'll find out. That's a good question.
In the garage.
Yeah, we typically don't change our buses often, but yeah, I know how they program out the routes.
Yeah. And you get one account for each student if you have multiple schools?
Yeah, everything is linked. It's one account for everybody. So you'll have...
So I have one for each of my...
Just really, it was definitely key for you.
Thank you.
Sounds excellent. All right, does that help you? Is that it?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Oh, dear.
There we are. Yes, so, how many were there? If they were a member of the board members.
Just about everybody was there, except you, two gentlemen were traveling.
I thought it was, it was nine. Mission is by, and then if mission can turn into action. Now I gotta call from the mayor of the... Look at Senate Texas, you know, we super think about having lobbyists. Because I get as frustrated as he does because we, we're only there if we can make the meeting. We're not there enough. And if you're there like a gadfly and if you're there getting information, the tendency to get our message across could be much greater. And he said, would you be willing to share in a lobbyist with us? If we were to, if the board wanted to do that, then we did that. Then we would go one path...
System for busing. So there's conversations around bell scheduling and times. I mean, that hasn't really come out yet. He's looking like the early and late elementaries. You know, at times if there's ability to stay busing, but we have to see the impact to, to the schools and the community. So that's, that's where transportation. Well, they're very subjective on some of the pieces. So We already had a process in place already, but some were really, I mean, dicey. I've had some now that have been, I know a friend who lives in Cheshire And they had a four lane road and the bus had the arm out and it automatically issues to take it depending who set the program up. And I mean, it wasn't, it was questionable for the violation.
But it's not that there's a rash or an overflowing number
No, no, it was, it was sense for additional revenue. But I mean, the company gets a piece of it. So there really wasn't a lot, I think, and actually made it back to I know the police chief, we looked at it extensively and they, they didn't say they can go forward with it.
Mr. It doesn't matter All the buses. So if you travel, it takes 49 and now 49 breaks down and 54 is driving them.
Oh, yeah, it, it, yeah, they'll, they'll always be on, yeah.
Is that the right question?
Yeah, they get, the bus, it'll, it'll follow the roads in a sense.
Right, for my account, I love it by the way, but when I set up my account, if bus 45 breaks down and 62 is driving it, is my account going to follow bus 62? You know, you know what I'm saying? Like if it's a totally different bus.
Yeah, it's
Not that that happens often, but just, you know what I mean? Like when I log on, I'll be like, where's the bus?
Yeah, or you'll see the bus on my YouTube server. I'll find out. It's a question. I, I don't know. Yeah, we typically don't change our buses often, but yeah, I know how they program out the roads.
Yeah, and you get one account for each student if you have multiple schools?
Yeah, everything is linked. It's, it's one account for everybody. So you'll
So I have one for each
Just really, it was definitely key for here.
Thank you.
Alright, does that help you? Is that it? Thank you. Thank you very Oh, dear.
There we are. Yeah. How many were there?
Just about everybody was there, in the exception of two gentlemen who traveled.
I thought it was, it was night. Mission is by, and then if mission can turn into action. Now I got a call from You may have heard the At Senate Texas, you know, we should think about having lobbyists. Because I, I get as frustrated as he does because we, we're only there if we can make the meeting. We're not there enough. And if you're there like a gadfly, and if you're there getting information, the tendency to get our message across could be much greater. And he said, would you be willing to share in a, in a lobbyist with us? If we were to, if the board wanted to do that, then we did that. Then we would go one pathway for action plan because then we would organize these Primary responsibilities, advocate For those areas that we outlined as important. To implement To help them. The number that was thrown out to me was around So I think if you're There at the meeting, you know that Their appeal, they can't fund you. Alright, so to invest in that is not wise enough. Particularly talking about building and doing other things.
That was a yes from Tavasack. Yes, Katrina. Yes, Phyllis. Yes, yes.
I'd say yes, but I'm not happy about saying yes.
Well, you don't have to say yes. You can say no if you want.
I won't go into why it's
With hesitation. Yes. Okay, I'm great. Thank you very much. Mr. Petrov, please.
Yes. Just one last thing to Sal's point. I was on a panel today for school finance reform with Joe Sarasola and Senator Vice Chief, the Chair of Appropriation.
First time I've had, you think it's strange, not stranger, but One of the students talked to me today, you know, and we talked about funding, and we talked about state funding, and that was what it was about, for the change. It was, it wasn't us doing something wrong. It was, it's, it's coming to light that
You've got districts that are down 30, 40 percent in enrollment.
And that's what it takes.
Elementary technology, this Joe
Well, it's up, it's one of subcommittees, so the subcommittee has to be